Well, good evening, Walks Hachy ISD community. I'd like to welcome you to another virtual town hall event here for my candidacy for school board. Hope you all are having a wonderful evening. If you are just joining in, we have the comment section where you can ask your questions directly, and I will answer those questions just as quickly and efficiently as I can. If you have follow-ups, by all means, put those in the comments section as well. As I mentioned last night, the Walks Hachy FFA department had an outstanding showing out at the Ellis County Expo. That is something that they do each and every year and do very well out there. And there's a testament to the hard work and dedication of the ag teachers and the students. That is something that cannot be done single-handedly. It takes a great partnership between the school, the student, and even the parents there. So lots of gratitude to those individuals and what they do. Their contributions do not go unnoticed. They're not ones that always get the accolades, they're not the big flashing neon sign folks, but they do a wonderful job and get great results out of the kiddos. My son, actually, his freshman and sophomore years was in the ag mechanics section doing some welding stuff. And had some great teachers out there at the high school and the CTE section with that program. And he learned a lot, a lot of skills that can help him later on in life to be, if he wants to be a welder or make some side change in his capabilities. So lots of great things going on out there in the CTE section of the high school. The one act play, I understand, is continuing to advance through their competitions. Andy Reynolds and his crew also do a wonderful job with that. Unfortunately, the soccer season came to an end. Sad to see that program not advancing in the playoffs, but they did as well have a wonderful season. Softball and baseball are kind of coming toward the end of their season, so hopefully we'll see a deep playoff run for those programs as well. The spring is always a very busy time of the year for educators and education. And so if you get the opportunity, go out and support some of the various programs that Walks Hachy has going. I'd also be remiss if I didn't give a particular announcement and a debt of gratitude to Denise and Rich Armstrong, who after many years of being the champions of the Walks Hachy ISD band program, are stepping aside. So personally, Mr. Armstrong, I would like to thank you for the years that you and I worked together. And then on behalf of my son Grant, who has been in your program now for three years at the high school level, I want to thank you for what you have done for him, what you've poured into him, and the life lessons that you have taught him. He is a much better person because of the influence of yourself and the band program. So I greatly appreciate that. Again, the band is a very tight-knit community where we all help each other out. And again, it would not be as successful as it is if it wasn't for Denise and Rich Armstrong. I wish them well as their retirement. I wish them lots of joy, lots of visits with grand, lots of visits with grandchildren, things of that nature. And I know the two of you are looking forward to that. All right, so as we go forward here this evening, I wanted to take a minute to talk about a comment that the Texas Governor Greg Abbott has posted on social media numerous times. And that is that he has created a program where teachers are well on their way to a six-figure salary. A six-figure salary for Texas educators. And the question is, how does that work? How does that happen? Well, of course, Greg Abbott doesn't tell the whole story in his social media posts that Texas educators are on their way to six-figure salaries, because the reality is, is it's very few Texas educators who are on the way to a six-figure salary. And so that is done through a program that was created called the Teacher Incentive Allotment. Now, the Teacher Incentive Allotment was a plan that came out of Governor Abbott's task force that was created a few years ago when there was, right after COVID, when there was a significant shortage of educators in the classroom. So Governor Abbott convened a group of folks together to research the topic, research why teachers are leaving education. And then the end result was that they recommended this plan of, hey, we've got to get teacher salaries. We've got to raise teacher salaries if we want to continue to have educators flock to the classrooms. So based on that recommendation, he got together with his folks and came up with the Teacher Incentive Allotment. So what is the Teacher Incentive Allotment? Shortened lots of times to TIA. So TIA is a program where teachers can earn designations on their certifications. And these designations come in three categories. They are a recognized, exemplary, and master. So when a teacher reaches one of those three levels, there is usually a pay stipend that comes with that. Now, that pay stipend comes from the state to the school district, and then the school district translates that to the employee. Now, what's interesting about the Teacher Incentive Allotment is that it follows you from school district to school district. So for example, if a teacher was masters, I see, received the master designation in, let's say, Cedar Hill ISD, and then came to Walks Hachy ISD, Walks Hachy would have to pay the additional amount for that individual. The state would transition the funding from Cedar Hill ISD to Walks Hachy ISD, so it's not going to cost Walks Hachy anymore. But that Teacher Incentive Allotment designation follows the teacher from district to district. And it lasts for a period of five years. After five years, the teacher would have to re-enroll or try to re-up their particular designation on the TIA. Now, Walks Hachy ISD joined the TIA program, as did many other school districts in the state of Texas. It is not a mandatory program. School districts do not have to join the TIA program. And there are several school districts that opted not to join the program. So Walks Hachy ISD was one that joined the program. And the first step of the program was to submit the plan, or submit a plan of how you were going to gauge your teachers as to which designations they received. So earlier today, I was on Walks Hachy ISD's webpage, and I found a video that was voiced over by Assistant Superintendent Lisa Mott. So she, in this video, went through the WISD TIA plan and how they got to their ways of evaluating teachers. So from that video, there were three areas that teachers were to be evaluated on to determine if they were eligible for TIA. So the first one was their teacher observations. Teacher observations accounted for forty percent of their rating for TIA. The second was student growth, which was fifty percent. And the remaining ten percent was done by teacher attendance rate. So if we break down each of those a little more directly, the forty percent teacher observation, so the state of Texas developed what's called T-Test, the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System. The T-Test is the state-approved method to evaluate teachers. And it's broken down into four domains. Domain one is your planning domain. Domain four is your professional responsibilities. That's going to work upon time following legal and ethical policies, things of that nature. Domains two and three are the actual learning environment and classroom management piece. And so in the Walks Hachy ISD Teacher Incentive Allotment Plan, the observation of forty percent was based on the scores in domains two and three. Now, within each domain, domain two has four indicators, or four dimensions, as we call them. And then domain three has five. So that means there's a total of nine areas that a teacher is rated on. Now, within those nine areas, there are five categories or five ratings that you can be selected as in those. Those go all the way from the highest being distinguished, the next down is accomplished, the middle one is proficient, the next one down is developing, and then the final one is needs improvement. So when we look at domains two and three, we categorize them as one to five. Distinguished, the highest being five, and needs improvement is a one. So the way that Walks Hachy ISD broke down their TIA plan is that a recognized teacher, remember, there's three levels of TIA, recognized, exemplary, and master. The recognized distinction required a 3.7 average score between those nine areas on domains two and three. The exemplary, 3.9, and then the master, 4.5. So teachers had to be evaluated in those scores, and they had to be on the higher end of the evaluation scheme. Now, having said that, Walks Hachy ISD also had a program to where you could waive your evaluation and only be evaluated once every three years if your scores fell within certain areas in your evaluation. When Walks Hachy implemented their TIA plan, regardless of whether a teacher wanted to participate in the program or not, if they were in the subject areas that are being evaluated for TIA, they lost the ability to do a evaluation waiver. And again, all this came directly from the video that's on Walks Hachy ISD's webpage voiced over by Assistant Superintendent Lisa Mott. So my assumption is that she's doing the voiceover, that she is the one who is responsible for making sure that all the TIA stuff works the way it's supposed to. And that's going to be important here in a few moments when I talk a little more about that. The second part of the TIA plan was student growth, which accounted for fifty percent of the TIA plan. So the way that Walks Hachy ISD was going to measure student growth for elementary students was based on their MAP RIT scores. So a MAP is an assessment that students are given at the beginning, middle, and end of the school year. And at the beginning of the school year, there is a calculation done that's called a RIT score. And many districts use MAP. And in all of the districts that I've worked for, I've asked various educators, various curriculum people, various administrators in central office, what is a RIT score and how is it calculated? The answer I get, and even calling the MAP company, the answer you get is it's a proprietary calculation that we can't explain how we get to the number we get to, but the computer tells us that number. A proprietary calculation that no one that I have talked to has been able to explain what exactly that means or how that number is calculated. So keeping that in mind, Walks Hachy ISD was going to use RIT score. So they look at the student's score at the beginning of the school year, and then the program, MAP program predicts or projects what the student should be at, what their RIT score should be at at the end of the school. So if a student met that, oh, great, check mark. If they didn't, then there's something going on. So that's for the elementary students. So for a, again, the three distinctions on TIA, a recognized teacher would have had to have fifty-five percent of her students meet the RIT score, exemplary, the projected RIT score for the end of the year, exemplary sixty percent, and master seventy percent. All right, now, for the high school, they don't usually do MAP at the high school. Instead, Walks Hachy ISD's plan was to use the STAR academic measure. So if a student met or exceeded the STAR academic measure. And again, the same fifty-five percent, sixty percent, and seventy percent of the students for the three TIA distinctions. The final piece of Walks Hachy's TIA, TIA plan was teacher attendance. And that accounted for twenty-five, or excuse me, for ten percent of the overall score. So to get the recognized level, teachers had to be in the top twenty-five percent of teacher attendance on their campus, exemplary top twenty percent, and masters top ten percent. So you've got a commitment there of being at school on time and really being there consistently, which is not a bad thing. We know that consistency in the classroom is huge for students to be successful and to get the highest quality education possible. Now, having said all of that, teachers jump through all of these various observations, the student growth measure, the attendance, and what is their payoff? What is their reward for doing all these things? Well, for a recognized teacher, for five years in a row, once you get recognized, you would receive a yearly salary increase of $4,190. So for five years, just over $20,000. For an exemplary teacher, $8,381. So a little, almost, or a little more than double. And so about $40,000 over the course of five years. And then for master teachers, $15,968. $15,968. So for this one, for five years, you're looking at roughly fifteen, thirty, sixty, about $75,000 for five years. Now, let's say teacher A gets recognized year one, they can still move up the designation level. They're not stuck at that one for five years, according to the state plan. Now, so that money is supposed to go to the teachers in salary increases. However, the district does have the option to keep some of that money. And Walks Hachy ISD's TIA plan, again, all of this on the video voiced by Lisa Mott, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Learning. The teachers were to get ninety percent of those funds, and the district was going to retain ten percent. All right, so laid out all of that. Why did I go through all that? Well, first off, I wanted to kind of dispel or combat Governor Abbott's statement that teachers are working toward a six-figure salary. First off, there's strings tied to that. And that, secondly, not many teachers are getting six-figure salaries. There's a lot of work that has to go into obtaining the six-figure salary. And even with a master distinction and the state-based pay for teachers, you're nowhere near $100,000. Most, in most rural districts, you're nowhere near $100,000. It is only your wealthy school districts, large school districts, that you're going to get close to $100,000. Not even sure that even in some of your larger, more wealthy school districts that you're going to get there. So first part is, like I said, to kind of rebut the governor's post about six-figure salaries for educators. But the important part for citizens of Walks Hachy ISD is this. Walks Hachy ISD's application for TIA was denied. That denial was appealed. The appeal was also denied. My understanding is that there were thirty-one teachers in Walks Hachy ISD who went through this process. And because they went through the process, they were expected to receive one of the three distinctions. But here, a few weeks ago, they received a letter from TEA saying that they would not be receiving the distinction, would not be receiving the additional payment or additional compensation because the district's data failed validation. So what does the district's data validation, failing district validation, what does that mean? So in the process of the TIA plan, your data has to be verified. And it's sent to Texas Tech University out in Lubbock. And they take a look at all this information, and they kind of make sure that things match up, that there's not any fraudulent activity going on there. The problem with the validation is, for a school district, is that if one teacher's data does not validate, then the whole district loses their TIA incentive. So I don't know, based on the letter that was received by the teachers, it didn't state that, how it fell, how it failed data validation, how many teachers failed data validation, it said data validation was failed. And the rationale that the, the letter from TEA I kind of gave or kind of described was that the teacher observation scores were super high, super good. And based on these super high, super good evaluation scores, the data would support or suggest much more student growth than what was shown. So there was a mismatch between the teacher's observation scores and the student growth. So because of that, Walks Hachy ISD's TIA application was denied, and thirty-one teachers who opted to participate voluntarily in the program were denied their promised compensation increase. Now, to say that this has left a sour taste in the mouth of the teachers is probably the biggest understatement of the cycle here, or of this school year. These teachers are not happy at all with the administration within WISD who did not properly, properly conduct themselves with regards to TIA. Now, ultimately, again, I'm assuming Lisa Mott was the individual who was in charge of the TIA plan. Again, she was the one who was voicing over the video on the WISD webpage that talks about TIA. And so ultimately, I think these individuals, Lisa Mott, the curriculum department, whomever was involved with TIA, has some questions to answer. What exactly went wrong? Why was not only the TIA plan data validation initially rejected, but then on appeal, you were also rejected? So did you make changes in between the initial submission and the appeal that you thought were sufficient and ended up not being sufficient? How did you come up with the information and the data that you submitted? So lots of questions here that the teachers have. And to my understanding, what I've been informed is that when the teachers asked these questions, they were not given answers. That the meeting that they had with the upper administration, the central office administration, was very short-lived in the sense of they came in, gave them some information, and said, oh, we're sorry, we can't answer questions. We've got just a limited amount of time because we've got to go to other campuses. Which is an understandable statement, but at the same time, when you're messing with teachers' compensation, I think you need to be able to be a little more available. Maybe you don't schedule all your campuses in one day. Again, I don't know how they set up their campus visits, but apparently they didn't allot for times for the teachers who wanted to ask questions to be able to do that. So as we move forward in the school year here, there's going to be, again, thirty-one educators who are upset, are going to continue to be upset, who could possibly be looking for other jobs in other places. And that saddens me as a parent, saddens me as a community member. Because if you're a teacher who wants to go through the rigorous, the rigorous demands of the TIA program that Walks Hachy put together, you're probably not a teacher that we can do without. You are probably a dedicated teacher, a teacher who wants their students to do well, and a teacher who's going to put forth effort to ensure that their students are going to do well. The two or three teachers that I know personally who were on the TIA plan are some of the best and brightest educators that I know. And it, again, it saddens me, it's disheartening that these teachers are unable to, like you say, reap the benefits of the, of their efforts. Because I've done great things this year with students. They brought students to a growth that was unexpected or was thought to be unreachable or unattainable. And those are the type of teachers we need in WISD. Those are the type of teachers that we need to learn from, to be mentors for younger teachers or for lesser experienced teachers, that we need to keep in their positions and have other teachers observe them and teach them how to do some of the things that they do. They're our best and our brightest, and we cannot afford to lose these individuals. As a board member, or as a future board member, hopefully, I find this as a topic that people need to be held accountable for. To me, failing our teachers this way is unacceptable. That's, that's the only way I know how to voice my displeasure with this. I don't know if there's going to be a discussion in the board meetings coming up over the next few weeks as to if the board is going to be able to ask questions about the TIA plan or ask questions as to why the TIA plan failed the way that it did. But I believe the board should be able to have the opportunity to ask those questions. I do believe that our school board is an extension of the teachers and that they should have the teachers back. And by going in front of Dr. Everett, Lisa Mott, the other individuals, and asking why this happened the way it did, I think is absolutely a board member's job and a board member's responsibility to its teachers. And that's exactly what I would do. I would parry succinctly and say, hey, tell me what went wrong. Now, we know what we're wrong, how are we going to fix it? How are we going to make sure that we don't find ourselves in this position again, in a position to where we have the perception that we're not taking care of our educators? Because that's absolutely what those thirty-one teachers feel like. And I feel for those thirty-one educators, because I know that they put in lots of effort and should be compensated for that. Now, in the remaining time here, there are two board meetings on the website right now. I don't know that there will end up being two board meetings, but there are two agendas posted on the WISD website for tomorrow, April eighth, excuse me, and Wednesday, April ninth. The agenda item is to potentially name the lone finalist for the superintendent position. I will just take a moment to reiterate my positions on the superintendent search. As I've said numerous times here, our students, our teachers, we cannot afford to have a superintendent who does not have experience in that job. We absolutely have to have an individual who can hit the ground running without a learning curve, that can come in and take a look at WISD and find our strengths, find our weaknesses, build upon our strengths while improving our weaknesses. An individual who does not have superintendent experience, I feel, would have a hard time doing that. So again, I urge the board, when you're making this decision, consider the experience the individual brings to the table. To me, it would be highly unacceptable to have somebody in that position that does not have current sitting superintendent experience. And quite frankly, if you want to be candid, it'd be kind of foolish. We're in a situation to where our academic accountability, our test scores are below the state, are below the region, and have been in that way for several years under our current leadership, that was Dr. Hollingsworth, Dr. Everett, Lisa Mott, in their roles of Assistant Superintendents of Secondary Learning, Elementary Learning. So to have a superintendent that doesn't have experience and doesn't know how to raise those test scores, again, in my mind, would be very foolish. So there were not any comments put in tonight. uh, there were not any uh, comments put in tonight, no questions. Uh, I do see we do have a few a lot of viewers, so if you guys have uh, questions for me, I will be uh, more than happy to address them, to answer them, uh, as we kind of wrap up here this evening. Alright, well, we just jumped to five. So um, again, if you have questions, feel free to add them to the comments. Let me give you guys a few more minutes here uh, to add those if you're interested. Again, um, as I've said, uh, numerous times, our teachers are our number one uh, priority in my mind. Uh, we can only have the highest quality education for our students if we have the highest quality educators in the classroom. So um, again, as a board member, that would be my, my number one priority, to making sure that our teachers are taken care of and taken care of in the best way possible. So, uh, thank you all, uh, for everyone who came out uh, this evening and um, enjoying this live. Early voting starts soon, very, very soon. Uh, so um, all means go out and vote early. Election Day is May the third. So uh, if you ha- don't get the opportunity to vote early, uh, make sure you uh, vote on election day. Early voting, uh, let me look at the calendar here, uh, starts uh, May, uh, May, excuse me, April twenty-first runs that all of that week, April twenty-first to um, April twenty-fifth. And then you get uh, the break for Saturday and Sunday and then back on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for early voting. And then election day, uh, that weekend, May third. So, thank you all for your time this evening. I look forward to the opportunity of representing uh, the citizens of Waukesha G ISD on the school board. Just remember, Daniel Hobbs, Lysen. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.